We can have the lady who was being 12 hours short. Jeff had extended the picture. He has told the 12 hours. You want to share that? Then the last party, because young lady works that thing.
Sure, it's like the people in college is great, it's the opposite.
Chair just talked a few things. I had a standing right there, I told her. Actually, just on the way, I'll pick it up. And then the guy behind me said, what do you got?
That never happens to an auntie and a auntie.
I could say something, but I don't know.
What? What? Keep popping up to my money.
Listen, y'all. I had all the showers last, on Saturday.
I saw that.
I had since been on the scene.
It's like, can't wait to hear.
About John on the stairs, he's gonna turn up.
Oh, I have a question about that.
And?
Well, grandeur has a ventilation issue all the time, almost 200 meters. And that's really pretty air in that. Anyway, so we got a fan, and it's in the ceiling. And that end.
Describe the fan. Awesome, too.
My thanks, sir.
My thanks.
So, you know, there's a separate circulator, and then there's the air conditioning, so it's circulating, so.
We don't have AC in the range, we just have those.
Yeah, so the company that monitors that is coming to replace a piece, an effort for a month. And they seem to think that what they'll install should not reduce, well, not minimize, but should reduce some of the.
But if it's as noisy as that fan just was, this fan I'm talking to you about is more, is less noisy. But you have to have, it'll create negative pressure if you don't open a door or a window. But there's a window, I see a window up there, you know, you could open that window and maybe the door, and that would be sufficient.
I mean, it, each summer, it has been loud, each time, we've always had to turn it down. Hopefully, we're able to do.
Well, I can look up the, find out what the price is. And then there's another unit that looks like a, it looks like, kinda like a, you know, a double door refrigerator. You know, it's about that big. That's an air ventilation system that actually purifies the air. And that comes from Minnesota, and that was the cheaper, we got a scratch and dent model. And while they were, you know, we were having a long distance conference with them, and they were talking, and I turned to them and I said, "Where the fuck are you from?" And they said, "St. Paul." I go, "Yeah, yeah, I know, they were from St. Paul."
Oh, I'm sorry, I kinda chuckled. I love when you say Minnesota.
Yeah, but, well, but, I mean, I knew what they were, when they did, they'd started talking, I knew where they were from. Yeah. And when I was a kid, growing up, I didn't think we had any accents. It was all y'all. All, all the other people had accents, we didn't.
All right, it's 7 o'clock, roll call. Lydia is not present. John, Dave, Mary and I are. Minnesota condemnation hearing that was supposed to begin at 1800 did not, because a resolution was found. And I don't know what that resolution is to report to the public. We have no unscheduled public part, we have no scheduled public participation. We do have a unscheduled public participation later on in the meeting. Move the minutes. Is there a motion to move the minutes of the June 24 regular meeting?
So move.
Second. Is there any discussion from all seven?
On page five, I, it shows, it says, "Board member sure not known that the name of the most schematic provider in the meeting package show that the work access through the dam site will be from the south side of the river."
I thought it was the north.
That's the one. Side of the river, south side of the river. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, you're right. It needs to be the south side of Dollar General, not the south side of the river. A good catch.
Other than that, I don't have anything.
And I have a little something. On page three, section seven, approval of bills. Calm down. Not that bad. Board member Petty said wonders, something like that. Board member Petty, this is a regular pass-through payment. So, I think she wondered if it was a regular pass-through payment. That, that was just the one I thought she said.
I agree with that.
She wondered. And then on page four, the tree issue. I think that the minutes should reflect something about the proposed three-way split for that cost.
Yeah. But there won't be a three-way split.
Huh?
Jeff, there's not going to be a three-way split, is there?
Well, that's what she stated in the meeting. She wanted it to look into.
And I remember that Chairman Morris said that the property owner would like the tree removed. And he had proposed, or he proposes, a three-way split between the town, the owner of the tree, and the district four or five.
Six.
Six. Four, five, six. District six. It was a three-way split that was proposed. And we didn't act on it, because it's not our place to act on it. But that was the proposal, as I recall. And that's all I have.
Okay. Is there any further discussion about the minutes for the 24th of June regular meeting? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the minutes for 24 June, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any objections or extensions? Minutes have been approved. Move the minutes. Is there a motion to move the minutes for June 27, the set, the special meeting?
So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Um, yes. In the roll call, should it say that I was virtual, since I had my virtue with me?
Never happened before, and I'm still.
No, I don't.
It doesn't have to say that. Okay, I get that. I have no idea.
Under the open meeting laws, it's just, you're an attendee, it's like you're, you're there.
It's cool with me. I just wanted to do it, make it kosher.
Any further discussion on the minutes of June 27? Hearing none. All in favor of approving a June 27 special meeting, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any objections or extensions? Minutes have been approved. Approval bills warrant, approval warrant, uh, 0126 and 0126 B through E. For a total of $1,123,610.31, do I have a motion to approve the warrant?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Do you have any discussion?
I'm good.
John? The 14 Western Star continues to cost us at least $10,000 in this bill, in this warrant.
Yeah, so the highway department, we talked, that we didn't want to be spending money. But it's pretty much out of service now, and they're doing some repairs. The plan is to sell it when the new trucks come in. So, it's not up and running. So, there should no, be no more costs. But again, there was some, just because they couldn't get it inspected, they just felt they had to do something. But, yeah, we put the kibosh on any more spending.
Well, finally.
Yeah.
Well, we saw $180,000 for a new truck. When is that?
You know, unfortunately, probably not till November, the end of November.
Thanksgiving, huh?
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I was asking.
Uh, I have a, like, what's Tyler Tech? Tell me what that is.
So, that's the software. So, in the municipal office, we have MUNIS software. And then we have Nemrick, and so that's part of the MUNIS software for municipal billing.
Yeah, okay. And I.
Yeah, I know it. Sorry. All these folks are, all their backups, Nemrick, MUNIS and Tyler, they've kinda got folks in a tough spot. And they keep raising those support fees, and it's just killing me every time. They said each year, they keep going up. We have, as an aside, we have been looking at other softwares, but there is much, it's as expensive a more, and there's that dreaded initial upfront. So, it's, yeah, I know, it's just heart-wrenching to see those things go up and up.
I just had never heard of Tyler Tech.
They've had a little vendor.
Yeah, they've been.
Been there all along, and I just never saw.
Too long.
Till I just noticed it. I also noticed that we are paying Lori Barofion, but that she is still, she hasn't appeared in that.
No, no.
It's kind of the fancy present that Charlie gave her.
That we gave her.
Yeah, as well, yes. I have nothing else.
So, Queen City PI, you paid the, what was the term that you used to pay that?
Um, it was an offline check.
And an offline check means?
So, we were able to get it to them quicker, because.
So, off-cycle, you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, because it was all, because it was, it was just caught in between our office count and mine, and then accounting. So, it was an extra week or two. So, we just wanted to make sure we got it, so.
Okay. Is there any more discussion about the warrant? Hearing none. All.
We're not gonna pay them twice then, are we?
No, he's already sent the check.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that the way you do things?
Not typically, but if, you know, if it's starting to be a couple of weeks late because of delay from, you know, going from, it went through four people, right, to the chair, then through Dan, me, and then into accounting. And so, it goes extra steps. I mean, just to hold those folks up.
Okay.
All right. All in favor of approving warrant 01-26 and 01-26 B through E. For a total of $1,123,610.31. Indicate by saying aye.
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 Are there any objections or extensions? Warrant has been approved. Please, do I have a motion to receive the bi-weekly payroll through June 22 for a total of $140,429.40?
So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to know why this payroll is considerably more than the other payrolls who've been approving. It's been $115,000 to $120,000, and now it's $140,000.
Yeah, so you look down through, there was a sizable payout in vacation time for two employees. And in regards to one employee who had been here a long time. Many, many years, even before I was here, the town, it's a long-winded story, but I'll get there, John. Many, many years, and even before I got, the municipality had been paying out sick time to employees. And they took that, or they changed the policy to do that. It was quite an uproar over that. So, they worked out an agreement where some employees could bank that time and get it, take it whenever they wanted to. So, actually, just some of the folks thought much long-term, and decided to keep it on the books. And so, when they left, it was more than a newer person would ever accumulate because of the new policy. So, it really, what the added cost was, was a payout for vacation time.
Okay.
Um, yeah, it was, I was, when I saw that, I was like, wow, that added up to quite a bit again. But it was due to that. So, very unique. It won't happen to that extent, because, again, it was an agreement many years ago to allow folks to bank it instead of taking. So, they lost some of it, but they could bank some and carry it forth.
Okay, I just wanted to know why.
But that's.
A lot higher.
Ask anything, we wanna give you the answers. Absolutely. No question about it. Ask away.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the, receiving the bi-weekly payroll through June 22 for $140,429.40, indicate by saying aye.
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 Are there any objections or extensions? Hearing none. Prove the receipt of the payroll. Next one is municipal condemnation of 73 North Main Street. As I said earlier, we had no hearing, it's been resolved. And we'll find out the details later.
Okay, now, I was gonna do it on the manicure, I can do it now.
Do what?
Just give you the, kind of how it played out, but.
Do we know what the final payment was to?
Okay. Is this the time, or you?
No, please, you were run down.
Yeah, so they were scrambling, scrambling. I didn't find out that they finally were able to reach an agreement between V Trans and the property owner until, I think it was probably 11:30, quarter to 12. Anyway, again, at the 11th hour, they are able to reach an agreement. They ended up, the state ended up granting the property owner pretty much the amount they were asking for in the tune of 30, I don't, around 37,000. It was near, it was more, more than double what the raised value is. But the state looked at it, tried to figure in some business loss. Plus, they also had to, the property owner, they'll have to move the sign, store it, because the sign will have to come down during construction. So, they're able to adjust, justify that additional cost above the original appraisal value. Based on some unexpected costs. Again, they allowed them some business costs, some sign-related things. As an aside, I think the state was a little bit reluctant to agree to that amount. They don't want to set a precedent. And they do have to pay, if there's federal dollars, so they do have to justify everything they do to federal highways. So, come to the chase, it was nearly double. But for the sake of the project, that's done. Now, V Trans can finalize construction plans and put it out to bid on schedule. Real quick, along those lines, Gary LaRoche, the project engineer from V Trans, did indicate that he plans to present the final construction plans to the town select board at your next meeting. And he also will finally, I've been pounding on him for 10 months to give revised cost estimate, will finally give that cost estimate. You know, unfortunately, we're hearing it's higher than, the increase is higher than expected. But you'll hear all that at your next board meeting.
Okay, thanks to Jeff. Approval of the 25, 26 tax rates for a total of, well, I've got many pages here. So, do we have a motion to approve the 25 tax rates, homestead and non-homestead?
So move.
Second. Very well, so. It's interesting to me, just to jump in here, that the, uh, I don't remember, just, on, on the comparison of tax rates on the page, let's see if I did this right. 2025 is 321. All right, we did, never mind. All right, so we're in 25. Right, I looked at the graph wrong. Is there any discussion?
Other than to make a notation, that the town general is $1.31 of 322. I think we operate this town very efficiently.
That's correct.
Yeah, it's 40% of what the education.
Yeah. Not quite.
John?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Mary?
Nothing.
Okay, all in favor of approving the 2025, 2026 homestead and non-homestead tax rate? Please indicate, well, let me read them for, of 321, 26 for the homestead, and 336, 26 for the non-homestead rate, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Signature. Are there any objections or extensions? Hearing none. The tax rate has been set.
Tax rules will be in the mail slot.
Right. And the thing about getting the chairman's report into the Northfield News, which is due today, and it doesn't come out for three weeks, and you're gonna tell everybody, hey, this is what the tax rate, they've already got their tax bill.
Just drag it through a little bit, sure.
Okay, next on the, for select board issues, appointment of the town forest stewardship committee. And his name is?
Bill Delisola.
Delisola. Bill Delisola. Do I have a motion to appoint Bill Delisola to the town forest stewardship committee?
Don't you think he has too many L's in his name?
I'm not going to critique a volunteer's name. So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of appointing Bill Delisola to the town forest stewardship committee, indicate by saying aye.
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 Are there any objections or extensions? There is none. Town manager report.
Thank you. So, as I mentioned, Main Street Bridge, that's moving on, it's back on schedule. V Trans will present the final plans, construction plans at your next meeting. And they'll present a cost estimate. Main Street water line and the Cheney Farm tank projects remain on schedule. Things are going pretty well. As I've mentioned, they've hit a lot of concrete in the roadway. That slowed things down, but one of the pluses is the state is paying for the removal of the concrete under the roadway, which has been cursed for this town and a lot of towns, villages and towns where the state put the concrete. So, that's good to thank for that. Tank project moving along. They're at the point now where the site contractor has done all their work, i.e. they pulled out all the old tanks. They put in the necessary stone, they put in a few, few hundred feet of pipe to connect. And so, now, they've got the site ready for the tank. And so, now, they've got the site ready for the tank contractor preload, so they'll be up in the next weeks or so, actually start fitting the tank into the site. So, things, things are on track. Historic bridges, I think it was the chair had kinda asked a good question about funding for the historic bridges. As you recall, the agency of transportation was doing scoping, an alternative study on historic bridges. The three cover bridges, and then the, uh, little north, no.
So, are you talking about Slatter Alley or?
No, no, the, the rail bridge.
Rabbit Hollow?
All right.
Rabbit Hollow.
Thanks.
Rabbit Hollow.
Yeah, so, yeah, they're doing those analysis, so that's gotten slowed. So, as you recall, it was federal funding to pay for a hundred percent of that effort, that funding is no longer available. But in my conversations with the agency of transportation, they're still committed to paying for the construction that comes out of those, they needed construction that comes out of those studies. Unfortunately, now the municipality is gonna have to cover five percent of that. But on the positive, the agency remains committed to, to doing work, they've got it in a capital plan to do those, so they're, they're committed. The only other downside is because of financial woes, they had pushed that, those projects out to twenty-thirty, I think before, was it twenty-twenty-eight or?
Twenty-nine?
Yeah, so they pushed it out a year. So, anyway, it's been a full circle, agency says they're still committed to, to funding the needed improvements to those, those important bridges.
That's the three cover bridges on Potts Brook in the?
Rabbit Hollow. Yeah, yeah, thanks, I, yep. Line Street Sidewalk Project, as you can see, they're starting to pour concrete, that's moving along. They're about a week behind the original schedule because of the, the curbing, you know, they originally purchased the wrong curbing, they sent it back because it was slow off. But on the positive, it's going well, and they're committed to, they're on schedule to complete the project by August first. I know some folks who were, mentioned that didn't think we should have started as early as we did and interrupted school, but, you know, you never know with contractors. And I would have, I wanted to at least get it done before school started, so, you know. We're just fortunate that they're there and they're doing a good job. Northfield Electric, as I had mentioned in my report, during the utility commission process, the development of the electric budget, has agreed that Northfield Electric will have to do a rate increase. The first one in, what, twelve, long time, thirteen years, pretty amazing. But, you know, it's gotten to the point where the, you know, the commission and Vepsa, we've had a lot of conversations, agree that it's time for Northfield Electric to seek a rate increase. Part of what's driving increased cost for Northfield Electric are an increase in transmission costs and things outside the region with, I saw in New England, their added cost. Plus, renewable energy mandates, that's all starting to drive up costs for these electric utilities. As an aside, what I'm hearing at Vepsa meetings is some of the smaller utilities, municipal utilities, are really struggling, really, really having a difficult time. And they've had to do rate increases, you know, several over the last couple of years, so. But a look at Northfield Electric's finances, still, in our opinion, remains very healthy, based on, still in reserve and solid capital budget. So, the, the rate increase take probably, I don't know, could take four or five months, it's not a quick process.
Do you, do you recall what the rate increase was going to be for, the percentage?
So, it's ultimately up to the Public Utility Commission, but they did put in for, I think it was fourteen, almost, yeah, fourteen percent of the difference.
So, it would be wise at fourteen percent for our big electric users to be made aware that in four or five months, we may be getting a rate increase of not to exceed fourteen percent.
Yep.
I think that would be wise.
Budget status reports, as you know, we just ended the, the budget year. Uh, pleased to announce that we will have a surplus in our budget, we're not running a deficit. All the departments did a very good job in being just under or at or slightly over, so each department did a good job. As we anticipated, we're seeing quite a, quite a surplus in the police department budget because of staffing levels. Uh, we won't know the exact amount of the surplus until all of the invoices come in and processed. As you know, we, they have a few linger into, into July, so then we have to do the final audit. So, once those invoices are processed and the audit is completely done, we'll have the final exact number of what that surplus. But again, it, I think will be a, a good number in terms of not too much, not too little. And considering, you know, it's the size of the budget. Ambulance union, as you saw in the packet, there was the vote on the part-time ambulance employees unionizing. It was held by the Vermont Labor Board, the board held a meeting, counted the votes, and based on the votes, did certify that they are now unionized employees. A likely next step in that process would be for the union employees or their representatives to reach out to the municipality to start negotiations on a union contract. As I noted in my report, gasoline for municipal vehicles, very difficult now to find companies to deliver gasoline to smaller customers up here in the region. As you know, we, for years, it was Corsi, they went out of business, and then, then we had Evans. They're out of, living in New Hampshire, they decided, they are no longer delivering to smaller companies up this way. I was a little annoyed, they didn't really give us much notice. So, I've been working with different vendors, trying to find somebody to, to supply fuel, it is tough. So, just in the need to get some available fuel, I did go around to a couple of the local gas stations and did secure an opportunity for us to, to allow folks to charge in the interim.
And we are, because we're a municipality, we're, we have, we're tax exempt from those taxes.
Yep. Um, let's see. And I was looking through the minutes, and there's a couple of things, there was a question about Turkey Hill, the resurfacing.
Yes.
So, it's probably about ninety-five percent complete. They stopped, they said they ran out of material, I'm like, well, that's okay, but we gotta finish it. So, I've been pushing the highway department to finish the upper sections, plus some of the property owners up there requested a little bit of realignment in the road, which, right from my perspective, makes sense because the town has been adjusting that road. So, but to bring it full circle, ninety-five percent done, looks great. I've had, we have had a lot of compliments from the property owners, it looks great, but almost done. Three-ten Water Street, uh, ready to, selected a contractor, now we're just working on a, on a contract. I know it appears like it's taking a long time, but I will note that FEMA took two and a half years to get through their process. And so, I got, we got approval to proceed probably a couple of months ago. So, we're well in, in our timeframe and working with FEMA, so we have until September to, to complete that. So, I'm quite hopeful that the contractor will be in there in the next few weeks, and, and they said it would take four or five days, that rain dependent, they obviously wanna do it when it's not raining, so the materials don't get soaked and weigh, weigh more, so, but that's solid, we're, we're on track with FEMA, and we're within the allowable timeframe.
Who's the contractor?
Uh, it was Lowbit, and folks in town, all's from.
Okay, Lowbit.
Yeah, and I did lots of due diligence, 'cause there's lots of folks tuning in, which I always do, and they've done other work. I didn't realize they had other folks in the family that are very well experienced, I thought it was just a lot of persons. Okay, real quick, two more things, or three more things. Covert inventory, as we talked about, regional planning is doing the inventory for us. They've finally got some interns on, and they're hopeful that will start within the next few weeks. Pretty amazing, they were saying that of all the municipalities in Washington County, Northfield has the most culverts of any other municipality, upwards of seven-hundred-and-ten culverts.
Oh, God.
I know, I was, I knew there was a lot from previous inventories, I didn't realize, you know, and obviously, you know, excuse me, you know, there's a lot of steep slopes, there's a lot of streams, a lot of roads. Again, I, I was, I didn't realize that.
Is that blue driveway culverts, do you know?
Um, I'm not sure how, but I'll have to look back, but.
I bet you does. Well, we've got.
Pardon?
We've got six on Thompson Hill, including my driveway.
Last thing, I'm close to hiring a person to fill Deb O'Brady's spot. Boy, I was feeling kinda naive, and out in the marketplace, folks are asking for and garnering a lot higher wages than we originally anticipated, so. But on the positive, looks like we've got somebody very well-qualified, a very nice person, I think that will fit in well with the existing folks in that office. Let's see what it is. I think that was it, thanks.
Any questions for the manager?
I have a question.
What do you?
Wanna go around?
Well, however you wanna do it.
How do you wanna do this?
Ask the question?
Okay, my question is, when, when you talk about the difficulty of finding gasoline for town vehicles, this prompts the question immediately, what about an EV option? Have we talked about EV options, for instance, like this new truck? I mean, I drive an EV, and I don't take a lot of road trips, EVs are good for that. That's, who takes a road trip in a town vehicle?
Well, you're, at least I can speak to the vehicles that are gasoline-powered, they're all working vehicles. And EVs don't, I, I have not heard of an EV that is within the price range, that is capable of hauling stone or, you know, enforcing the law. Cop cars, like, I've never seen an EV that was a cop car vehicle.
No, but I, I'm asking.
All right.
I'm asking because, you know, people who commute, the guy, my, one of my, one of the kids that used to live in my house, now they're grown up and are national, people doing national things, and he commutes to Burlington every single day. He plugs his EV in at night, and then in the morning, he gets out and goes. So, I mean, these kinds of regular trips can be planned for, and you can, you can, and you can plug in. I just wondered, you know, have we even looked at EVs?
I don't remember any discussion.
No, maybe we need to start thinking about that.
We, except for one vehicle, we were thinking about doing a, the meter reader view.
Yeah, yeah, but it was like ten grand more than the, than the utility commission.
Yeah, but what's ten grand, where you can, you know, you get that ten grand back in less than ten, in less than the life of the vehicle.
For sure. Yeah, I think the utility commission, the end, so, based on what was in the budget, right, they had a discussion, right?
It did, they decided that ten thousand was more expensive than the purse could manage.
Yeah, I understand that, I really understand that, I just wanna make a rate, I just wanna tweak people's consciousness so that we stop thinking about, you know, the next quarter or whatever.
Right.
And we start thinking about total cost for vehicles, total cost for the life of the car, for the vehicle, and, and think about that. I mean, goodness knows, we bought a conventional vehicle, what do you call that, the best, best western or great western, what do you call that?
Western star.
A western star, it, it's a nightmare, and, and.
Well, I can, without disrespect, I can tell you, those, those trucks are not available in electric.
Well, I can ask you, how much did that whole vehicle cost all the way through?
Which, the, the utility car or the?
No, the bad, the great western, the sunny western sunset.
Repair since we've owned it, is what she said.
Yeah, oh, I can't, oh, I'm sorry.
It costs a lot of money to own that vehicle. It costs a lot of money to own that vehicle, and that's why I'd like to, you know, maybe not while I'm on the work, but I'd like to have it be thought about.
John? Oh, what's the status of the new financial director for the town?
Yeah, so, we're re-advertising, and I've spoken to the league, they had some good ideas, plus some recruiters, so we've got some, some ideas. Yeah, so, we are grateful Lori is, you know, staying around for a while, but yeah, it's still a priority. I think you folks had some good ideas about looking in a different direction, so, and it's, meaning BLCT, they had some good ideas and some recruiters. I think, you know, it's tough getting people from afar to, to come move to central Vermont, that's what I'm hearing. And that's why three of the folks that were pretty good candidates wanted to work entirely remote, one person, great candidate, didn't even wanna come in for two weeks, and like, you know. And they wanted a lot more than what the budget was, I was really stressing about that, so. But we are widening the field and trying to be a bit more creative, but again, Lori's there helping out, so I'm confident. You know, within a few days, I'll have somebody in Deb's position, and then with Lori there, I'm very, very confident that things will continue smoothly on, on the finance.
Okay, I understand we got a new highway employee?
I had mentioned, I think you had welcomed them, they've been, yeah, I put it in my report, but this person's been there for two months, I think. I think I put it in the report, and I think Mary had said welcome to, to the person, yep.
What happened to the Volvo loader? I mean, we spent six thousand dollars fixing it, we spent six hundred dollars hauling it. I don't know where it went off the road, but obviously it did.
Yeah, I'll get more details, yeah, they, it, it, there was, well, there's multiple issues, they did go off the road and pulled something, but when, seems like that's always the case when they get in there with those bigger vehicles, you know, they find other issues. So, it was unfortunate that it had to be taken up to, to the dealer. But I, I can get an absolute, exact rundown of each, each component and everything.
Well, I just wanna know what happened.
Yeah, only, yeah, I mean.
Obviously, it went off the road.
Yeah. Well, I know, it wasn't, there wasn't, by your saying, there wasn't an accident, like they went off the road and hit something, I think they stopped on the side of the road because there was issues and did not wanna continue, did not want to further damage the engine, so, you know, I think there was the dreaded, it's called the deaf.
Diesel emission fluid.
Yeah, it's caused so much issues with these new trucks. That's why you'll see a lot of contractors will keep some of the older trucks, 'cause they don't wanna dare head down that path, so progress is not progress sometimes.
UPS changed to gasoline motor because of that.
Now, look at the problem we had with one of the ambulances a couple of years ago, same thing, progress may, it's not always progress. Oh, wait, I know, it stinks, so, yeah, but I can get you full down, again, it was not an accident, they, they pulled over, looked and saw issues and were on the ball enough not to continue, which sometimes unfortunately can cause more significant damage.
Yeah. The TV's mount still hasn't happened yet.
Yeah, so, the electrician, we've talked about who it was, I have to get him back in there to do the work, like I told him, been long enough to make it a priority. So, I have priced some desks, new desk, you know, it's probably eight thousand to get a nice set, but it's worth it, so. We have.
What is this?
Yeah, with a decent one, with decent material, and the chairs. And the chairs.
What's wrong with this one? It's falling apart.
Yeah, that was part of the.
One of her legs are falling apart a couple of years.
That's what the, you folks wanted to update. I know, I was kind of shocked about that, but again, I think, you know, with this last budget, there was not money, but you put much, put money in it now, there's, I think, fourteen thousand. So, there is money to do that, so. We've been pricing and, and again, I keep saying, I'll get you photos, but we'll do that. But again, I just got to get that person in here to do the work.
Are the generators all in now?
Yes, yeah.
Operational?
Yes. There's just one minor, probably fifteen hundred dollars additional work needs to be done with the one in the ambulance and the highway. Um, just the way it was set up, it's not fully covering everything that's needed in a highway. It's covering everything in the ambulance, but there, there's just some additional lights that we think is appropriate, but yeah, they're all in, they're functioning and all as well.
Okay, because I saw something in the.
Yeah, just some final, yeah, just some final work.
Okay. What else? Storing broke bridge, it needs to be fixed.
The what?
The storing?
Yes, yeah.
Cover bridge needs to be fixed.
Yeah, I've got polls for that, yeah. So.
And I think it needs another sign at the bridge saying that the clearance is twelve feet.
So, there's, the two signs are up now, so you're, you, would you find a third one? Which is fine, okay.
Right at the bridge.
Yeah.
Because there's one way down.
Could somebody get by it, and, you know, some folks need to remind.
Yes, definitely so.
Okay, so, a, a, a third sign, all right.
That's my suggestion, that's.
No, 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 I, hey, I, I, it pains me every time, I swear, it pains me every time I see somebody at being irresponsible with those.
Yeah. Okay, now, yesterday I was looking for the poles for the headache bars, but.
Well, more will come, you know, so we can, I'm pretty certain we can mandate or require that they give us some additional poles because Northfield Light and Light has an ownership, so.
Yeah. Does anybody know what this, what this discussion is about?
No.
The phone company, uh, when they moved the, uh, light poles to do the project on Vine Street, took the poles. John's got an idea that you use those poles for headache racks and covered bridges. So, that's what that discussion was. So, if they can drill it, put it in, put a bar across the top. Put a telephone pole across the top.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, we have to wait till twenty thirty, we, we need something before that.
Definitely. Oh, that's all I got.
Yeah, are you doing people's concerns or responses to?
Well, it was supposed to be a, uh, question from the manager, from the manager's report, but it morphed into, uh.
When you, when you've done more things, I'll, I'll get, I'll get to my stuff.
All right.
Okay. Sorry, sorry Dave.
I have a question. It is about the headache bar of Shauna Faran. And I was at the meeting a couple of years ago when the people came about the historical covered bridges.
I'm sorry, what's her name?
Shauna Faran. And, um, at that time, it was discussed, uh, was brought up about doing those headache bars. Um, for lack of a better word, I guess, and it was said that we really don't want to go that route because, um, people get killed, um, people go through with campers and there's little kids up in the hideaway beds and.
Yeah, we're not at the discussion for, this was about repurposing telephone poles. Then we have, and if we kept the telephone poles, then we would be having a discussion of, potentially, and then, of course, we would have engineers and we would go through the normal bureaucratic route to make sure we're doing everything right. But right now, we're just a discussion of repurposing telephone poles.
I heard about headache bars and.
Right, well, that's what we, we, we tried to rebrand it, but everybody likes the headache bars. John, are you done?
Yes, I'm done.
Dave, so, uh, I have questions. So, uh, at our last meeting, on the agenda was RE Tucker Company to speak to us. There was no one there that showed up.
Yeah.
And they're not on the agenda tonight. Um, didn't we ask the manager with, in coordination with the highway subcommittee to bring to the select board their opinion on that proposal?
Yeah, and I, I can't remember if we met, did we meet on, I thought we did.
Because that proposal, it was just a, I think, query.
Right, the highway committee has not met on that. Okay.
But more follow-up, who requested to be on the agenda?
The Tuckers, and we thought they were going to be here.
So, don't you think you should follow up?
I, I, yeah, I have talked.
I was expecting them to be on this next.
Yeah, so, they, they called, we finally connected, and so, um, we're gonna, yeah, I need to talk to, I guess, the chair about whether we want to add them on the agenda or if you want to kick it to the highway.
Well, my point, and I told you this in a meeting with John, you should be reporting back to the board what the material is in the pit. How long is the material going to last? How can we make a decision on all those details? Um, you know, that's wasting everybody's time if you have all that information so we can make a decision whether it is a good investment or it's a bad investment.
Yep.
And I think the sooner that's done, it'll come to a resolution.
Yep, good point.
Um, the dam removal, what's the status of that?
So, um, I spoke to Corina Daley Friday, I think it was, and, um, they're still waiting for FEMA to give final approval. Plus, there is some issues with the state historic preservation, plus, uh, the bat species issue. And so, on the positive, the fund, the FEMA funding is still there, it's locked in, from what we're being told. Problem is, the, the three of us, myself, Corina and the engineers, don't feel we can go out to bid without those final approval. And as I think I noted in my report, the last time or the time before, um, you know, it's unfortunate, FEMA seems to be paralyzed, and they've had, uh, lots of folks, uh, like go at that level, plus folks are non-responsive, I don't have to worry about employment or whatever, but they're just almost paralyzed at this point, and they're not giving back to people, and they're not giving final approvals which should have been given months ago.
So, my question then is, how is that going to affect the bridge project?
Yep, and we've had.
No, but how is it going to affect it?
Yeah, that, so, as we, and Gary LaRose can speak to that better when he comes, but yeah, there is a concern because the design of the bridge has to take, it's not significant, but the design of the bridge does have to take into consideration when the dam, whether the dam's there or whether it's not, so.
Jesus.
Yeah.
So, that's my point.
Good point.
So, my point is, do you think we should be getting, engaging our, um, legislative representatives at the federal level involved with this?
I'll, I'll speak with Kritik, yeah, it's not a bad idea, we'll start strategizing.
I mean, I, I just see this screwing that bridge project, Jeff.
Yeah.
This is, I don't remember, Jeff, let me ask you, how long is it going to take to remove the dam once they, everything is approved?
They say they can do it two months.
Right. So.
We're, we're getting down to the.
I only have, I have six weeks. I have six weeks because I have to do it at the end of the bat thing, and they have to do it before the beginning of the trout thing.
My, my confidence is, is not going to happen this construction season.
Fine.
But yeah, they have to be, well, they can work along the edges after those times or before those times, but they have to be out of the.
I, I think we should approach our, uh, federal, uh, representatives and tell them, we, we have great concerns, uh, that FEMA is dragging their feet. I mean, don't tell us that, we should be telling our representatives that. Um, I'll work with the manager to get a letter from the chair. Um, that's good. Um, power outage, can you just give us a brief overview of what happened? The whole town went out, first time in a long time.
Yeah, so, um, what had happened was, there was major wind and storms in the valley that ended up affecting the transmission lines, um, so unfortunately, it affected here in Northfield. But we were, I, we were, I was talking to Jim Russo throughout, but fortunately, I was so damn pleased Green Mountain Power was here quick and they got it going pretty damn.
I would say within half an hour.
Oh, it was very quick.
Amazing, and then there was.
If I can just straighten that out, I know a little bit about electricity, I'm sorry. They have two mains coming to, uh, Northfield, the substation. One comes from Warren, the other one comes from Green Mountain Power. So, all they had to do is switch stations.
Got it.
Switch transmission lines, and that put it back on, except for there was a half dozen people.
They didn't, yeah, with the surge, um, it blew out, I think, a transformer and affected half a dozen people, but still, Green Mountain Power was amazing. They were in here and they got those folks within a couple of hours, so.
So, I've been looking for the air brake signs, have they been put up?
Yes, they're up, I see them.
They are, where are they at?
One is right outside here, one is, I, I noticed something. One is outside here, one is outside of the, um, outside of, of the falls.
Good, thank you very much, I'm all set, thank you.
Yeah, it's on site, I felt a little pushback because folks, I don't, they're not legal, I said, just damn it, do it.
Right, we've heard that for months.
I know.
Mary, did you hear something?
Well, you had to make them first, I'm sorry.
So, under concerns, I, I did have office hours last, um, or, this past weekend, and, um, I saw six people, which was a delight because that was the most people I've ever seen in one time and, uh, at office hours. And, um, first of all, um, I want to say, everybody in the fall is delighted with the lights. Lighted, delighted with the lights. And, um, it, it, um, Rena said, um, Nora says that, Norma says that, you know, there are older people, there are young people, there are people with strollers, they're all doing it. Norma and I and Don, Doyan, uh, had fun, uh, try, trying to train people to stop, and mostly they do stop, mostly.
There's a few that don't.
There's a few that don't, and to that now issue, we want to have, find out what it's going to take to put up a sign that says, stop ahead or pedestrians ahead, pedestrian crossing ahead, slow down. Why, what are you talking about, Elroy? You don't want something like that?
Or make a hill of beans about it.
Maybe it won't.
No.
But, but, but what we need, yeah, I, and you and I have to talk about something else that's bothering the heck on me too on our, on our street.
Yeah, they won't stop flashing, flashing lights, not going to stop for a sign.
And then an older lady.
They'll stop for hula lights.
Then an older lady with a walking stick came in to the falls gen and said, she loved the light, and she said it makes her feel safe. So, I, I just want to say how much gratitude there is for that.
I know it took a while, but, and I get it, I'm getting obnoxious, wasting your time, but that was on a town road, it would have been done last year.
Yeah, I know.
State, I gotta be careful.
Everybody was doing that.
Well, it wasn't all the state, it was the vendor that was involved.
The vendor was a little.
It was, it was all great, it was the state, but they gave us their pain for half of it, so.
And, um, Norma also wants, um, she said, she's so happy with the, with the work that was done, she wants to extend it to the end of her building. She owns that land, so it's just kind of going to be her patio. But, you know, it's almost axiomatic in town planning that if you, people like to be around other people. And so, if she puts tables, wrought iron tables out in front, it's going to, it's going to make it look like a cafe, it's going to help her business, and it's going to help make, so, make Northfield Falls look more like a village like it used to look about, um, seventy-five years ago.
She's talking about extending the sidewalk?
Hmm, she's talking about extending, she's talking about hard surfacing out to the end of her property. Okay.
Parallel to the road.
Parallel to the road.
Uh, main street or Cox Brook?
Main street.
That's it.
Okay, which is group twelve.
That's a, that's an interesting complaint because, uh, Jeff right now is working with the state on, uh, who came up and said, uh, we're going to tear up that sidewalk. We're going to, you're going to have to remove that sidewalk.
Well, not, fortunately, not, not the panels in front of her store, but the ones between the panels in front of her store and the road. And I'm very upset because I went out there with those people and they're like, looks good, and so, we're.
Who was saying that then?
So, there's.
I think I'll just go lie down there for top of it then.
Yeah, so, i- it's not going to change.
And Elroy will come with you.
So, again, the panels in front of, uh, the store will remain, the panels where the, uh, flashing beacon will remain, there's a question about those additional panels.
Oh, I don't know.
It, but you know, it, the.
We built it by, we, it was designed, the design was approved, it was built to the design, and now they want to move the concrete, let me tell you.
Who is they?
Well, there's, well, there's two entities, there's the permitting folks, and then there's the folks that give the grant money and, or, uh, monitor how the grant funds are used. So, that's been our other problem, you know, conflicting information between.
Don't, don't both the representatives from, from Washington, from Northfield go in, live in our town?
You're talking about legislature.
And both of them are Republicans, can't they talk to this administration about that nonsense?
Well, we have planning strategy.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to.
The positive, though, the beacons are in, they'll stay.
That's good.
The basic design will stay.
And she's going to, she's going to do that so that, and I'd like you to put it on the tracker as complete. Because you put common project update planning completed, so you could put.
Well, it's just the last thing was getting reimbursement.
You want to end up.
Yes.
You use up your paper.
Oh, complete, yeah.
Okay, and, um, then there's a hazard on the corner of, well, uh, which was pointed out to me by a resident, there's a hazard there on the corner between Route Twelve and Cox Brook. And it's, there's cones there, there's drainage that falls down, if, there's, there's, it's a great, it's a great angle breaker.
Yeah, so, um, that's just one additional piece. But, uh, the utility folks are going to come in, put a riser on the basin, lift up.
Yeah, that's got to happen.
And then come in and put material to raise that up.
So, everything will be the same.
Jim Russo, they've done a great job, and so, he's ordered that, so they just got to finish that off, raise up the basin to get the stormwater cover at the appropriate elevation, and then they'll come in and asphalt it and remove that. So, but for now, that's why it's heavily cone.
Okay, so, I'll tell Norma that, that you're going to raise it and that'll be good. Then there's some new trees, right, ringing the, um.
What?
There's some new trees ringing the, going around the, uh, ball fields at the Falls Ball Park. And there's no mulch around them, and so, those trees won't ask if they don't get mulched.
Oh.
They probably should have those little wire things around them too because we're just thick with deer down there, so they'll come and chew off them. And if they girdle a tree, that's the end of the tree, the tree is over there. So, that needs to happen. And so, um, mm, mm, mm. Oh, one thing Norma did tell me about having that sidewalk is that less dirt comes into her store.
Thanks.
She says, she doesn't have to, then, then another person came to see Missus Stillinger, and she asked to talk about, um, uh, the, um, is, is, and this is confusing to me too, is the transportation oriented design, the farm-based coal people, are they doing the work? Is the transportation-oriented design, the form-based code people, are they doing the work?
What do you mean doing?
Are they going to do a code for us?
No.
But this is so confusing to me. So who's going to do that?
Well, so I mean, they provided an example and how it would look. But at some point, when the municipality updates its zoning and if it decides to adopt that code in its full extent, then the municipality, the planning commission, will have to finish it off. They provided a good base, they provided a good form, what it will look like. But there's still going to be more information to tailor it to Northfield.
Are they going to give us a template or something?
Yeah, yeah.
They're going to give us a template.
Well, they basically have as part of that, giving you an example.
Well, they've given us a lot of pictures and stuff.
And there's a lot of verbiage too.
Oh, there's some verbiage too. That's what we need to know because I don't want to have to write that. And, um, uh, better sign, this is, uh... Okay, and then there was, I did some work myself of putting together some people from the Conservation Commission and some people from the affordability, I mean accessibility, walkability people. And I put them together and I said, "Now you people come up with some kind of compromise for Cheney Field there, for the parking at Cheney Field." There's a lot of questions. They have a lot of questions. And I said, "They have to write all that out before, before we can consider it." They have to write it out to us in person. And I do believe that that's all I have.
Okay, on your project tracker, how about if we update the completion dates? I think Mary's already listed, but you know, uh, yeah. Just a simple thing, I think, you know, October 1st through 24th, maybe we ought to, will we put a new date on there?
Yeah, maybe, like 12:31, yeah.
Uh, let's see, the Vermont Youth Conservation Board is working on the town forest around the Vermont Pond, the Butternut Junction and the Southern Beaver Pond. And they've got, they're going to put a bench seat up there and we welcome the town, glad that they're there. Uh, the swimming pool, I had, oh, a farmer's market today, fellow came, he's a Vermont player. He was just talking about, he'd just come from the swimming pool. He complimented the staff. He wouldn't stop talking about the swimming pool in Northfield and the staff in the swimming pool.
Yeah, they're pretty nice.
And it was, uh, he was very impressed with the staff, so well done to staff. All right, we've all talked about our concerns and questions, public participations.
I apologize. I forgot one thing that's important. The tree on 12, Route 12. Um, so the agency of transportation just typically will not get involved unless the tree comes down. So on the positive, though, I had Jim Russo reach out to Snapping Turtle. I guess he should give them free PR. And got a very, very reasonable bid, what was it, thirty-five hundred?
Thirty-nine. His bid was thirty-nine. Thirty-nine.
Yeah, thirty-nine hundred. So again, the agency, they don't participate in that. So we, Steve Fitzhugh and I and Jim talked about it. So in everybody's interest, we'll, we'll go half on it. So I've written, I've dropped a letter to, I didn't get that till last Friday, but I've drafted a letter to the property and we're just saying, "Hey, this is what we've come up with." You know, Northfield Electric will do half if you can do half. Again, real quick, you know, it's on the other side of the street. We have to be very careful about, you know, Northfield Electric taking down trees on the other side of the street. You know, I just, again, it's, it's not being cold or heartless. It's just, we're just trying to do the right thing and just being very careful. We don't get, hate to, the crass term, get sucked into lots of situations where it becomes over budget and unmanageable. But I'm, yeah, but this, we felt it was in the best interest. I apologize. Go ahead.
No, that's a good thing. We're going to spend probably a thousand dollars on trimming a tree or you can spend seventeen hundred dollars on removing the tree, eighteen hundred.
Eliminate the problem.
Yeah.
Right, and District Six won't participate. Thanks very much. All right, anything else?
Yeah, what's the crosswalk painting schedule?
When is the, what's the crosswalk painting schedule?
So we found a good company. I signed a contract over a month ago. And they keep telling us next week, next week, so Carl and I both have been calling. The guys get annoyed with us. But they tell us they should be here any day. But on the positive, good company, a different company, and I signed it five weeks ago, the contract.
Anything else, John?
No.
Oh, wait, anybody else? Okay, public participation unscheduled, Rebecca Trower. Come up to the podium.
Hello, I'm Rebecca Trower. I am here for the fact that I'm being harassed by the town manager. I'd just like to say that not everyone here in town, in Northfield and Vermont in the United States has internet. I personally don't. I've asked to have things that were important to the town, maybe increases, other information, sent out in a flyer in the electric bill. Since everyone gets their electric bill through the mail, that's just to try to start by being pleasant. I'm going to read this so that I don't forget or get angry.
Okay, but we are not going to accept any personal attacks at this meeting.
And I'm not.
Okay.
I'm getting personally attacked and that is an issue. So thank you for saying that and thank you for insinuating that. But, all right, so last fall, I was sent a letter by Mr. Schultz, the town manager, stating that my pallets needed to be moved. They were in the right-of-way and they were a hazardous situation. I asked Mr. Schultz for clarification. He came to my home and he showed me where to put the pallets and where they had to go. I pointed out at that time that the hazard was that there is a stop sign and people don't understand that a stop sign is not the stopping, it's the intersection. And suggested that they do the correct thing and put the line for the intersection at that time. I also pointed out two other hazards or right-of-way issues on that short street of Washington, which went unnoticed. And at that time, I pointed out, this is harassment and singling me out for no reason. And he said that it wasn't. And I'm like, well, the definition of being singled out is you ignore everything else in the area and you focus on me. That being said, I let it go. I did not do anything further. I did ask Mr. Schultz if I could have the statue that he was quoting that said I was in violation. He said he would give me that. When I spoke to him the other day, he said he had sent it. I said, "If you have a copy of that, I would take it." He did not, which to me, I don't have it, he doesn't have it, that means I didn't get it. So I have now received a letter on the 24th of June from a minister, and I do apologize, Osek. I don't know, Mitch Osek, I think. He's the planning person. But he sent me a letter and it stated that I have rats, vermin on my property, that I am, that it is a hazard, that there are issues. And he had reports and pictures and that I needed to make sure that this was all cleaned up. I went and spoke to Mr. O, I'll just say that so I don't butcher his name because I'm not trying to be disrespectful. When I went and talked to him, he said he had seen a picture of a rat on someone's phone. I said, "Well, who was that?" He said, "Well, Mr. Schultz had told me to send a letter to you." And I said, "Well, could you show me the reports?" He said, "I don't know if I can. I'll have to discuss this with Mr. Schultz." I spoke to two of you. You both knew that this had happened, right? You both knew about the letter. So this is not new to you. You both knew about it. I didn't call anyone else because I didn't feel calling more than two people were needed. I left the message. I spoke to you. You said to come here. Here I am. So I then went to the office and did the, got the Form for Freedom of Information, which is not in any way a freedom of information. It's just something that you can be strung along with. I actually did the Freedom of Information with statues and requesting not to be charged and what I needed as public information to help with the vermin and unsanitary information. So at that point, it has two days, you have two business days to give the information. I met with Mr. O and Mr. Schultz at the town office and I received an email from my neighbor, Mr. Knox. I received three pictures. And when I said, "Show me the rats in the picture." "Oh, there were none." "Oh, show me this, the third, second, none." "Oh, show me the third. Where are the rats?" Because you sent me a letter stating that I have vermin on my property of rats and that you would receive proof. Unfortunately, none of that was true. But you can slander somebody, you can have defamation of character to someone, and you can continually harass someone. So when I asked Mr. Schultz about the property that I own and the pallets, my building material, and he got in ten complaints, I said, "Were that, were they all from Norwich?" And he said, "Yeah, most of them." Okay, so at this point, anyone can do hearsay. And to be told to the manager or the select board, I guess, I don't really know. But I can be defamed and slandered and I think that's wrong. And I am asking for a public written apology because what you all have done is unfair to me. It's my property. I have every right to do what I want. And when Mr. Knox, my neighbor, who sent all that information to y'all and said all that and stuff, well, he doesn't pay my property. He doesn't pay my mortgage. Norwich doesn't pay my mortgage and no one else does. So when you all decide to slander and use defamation of my character again, be ready because I'm not going to let it go again. I'm done with this. You guys have gotten sued numerous times by town people because of your actions or your town manager. Who is in charge of the town manager to make him stop doing this? I don't know. All I want you to know is that I am done and this is my letting you know as a fair human being to stop. Thank you.
And Rebecca, can I have a question, please?
Yes, sir.
We usually let the board ask questions.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't.
But I wanted to call you back. You got a letter that said that there were documents and photographs.
Correct.
Did you get the document, a copy of the documents and the photographs?
Yeah.
You did.
Yeah.
And in there, it was, was it substantiated that there was vermin?
No.
Okay.
Was there any in the pictures? No. Was there even any reference in the email to it? No.
Okay, in the email?
The email that they said was the report.
Okay.
There was nothing.
Gotcha. Dave, do you have a question? Rebecca, you've asked the two questions I wanted to hear. John, you have any questions for Rebecca?
No, we've talked.
Mary, do you have any questions?
I'm, you, you asked them.
Thank you, Rebecca, for your time.
Thank you. I hope you understand.
Uh, do you have a question for the board?
Yeah, I do.
Oh, I'm sorry, Rebecca, I'm sorry.
So, you know, I am one of the people and I made the complaints.
About?
About your pallets.
Well, that's my building material, so thank you for complaining. But it's my property and my building materials, so thank you.
And you're making it unsafe for me to drive around that corner.
Well, you need to go up to the line and you have clear view. There is no line. You're right.
Okay.
I don't have to argue with you. I'm just telling you.
Thank you. Thank you.
It makes it very unsafe.
Thank you. Thank you.
And Jeff was not alone in his decision to write a letter to ask you to move those pallets.
Yes, and he told me he could. He was being nice because he could have just given me a thousand dollar fine instead of writing a letter. So that was very kind of him and I do appreciate somebody who can say what I can and can't do on my property. I moved it for the right-of-way. I was also here at the meeting when everyone on Central Street was told, "Oh, that's your property. We're taking out the sidewalk." It's not, but I told them that, them too.
Here you are. Is there anybody else for public participation? Lynn Doni.
In fact, I'm going to give you guys, I'm going to keep you here all night. There's one for you, Ken. You're ready, you're going to get a chance. You want to get rid of tonight? There's one for you, Jeff. There's one for Lydia. There's one for Charlie.
There you go.
Mary?
Thank you.
John?
Thank you.
And Mr. Max.
Thank you.
My three questions and, um... Potholes in town, are we going to get them filled before February or are we just going to...
What's that, Lynn?
The potholes in town, are we going to get them filled? Got a big one up by Norwich, seems to be getting bigger and bigger right by the, I don't know, it's a manhole or some... I think it's a manhole up there.
I think that's utilities.
You going down here by where Videos and More used to be? You got a lot of cracks in town now that have opened up now more because there's not, the pavement should be in there. Um, I realize the guys are busy, but I think it's about time.
We are going to pave Main Street, North Main Street, down by the Bean property. Um, so that'll get paved. Um, that's just really deteriorating. The state's not coming in for four or five years. So we're doing that. Um, and they have done some patching, but we'll make sure they get...
Maybe those two slots are the worst.
Where about?
Up by Norwich and down by Videos and More, where Videos and More is... The one by Norwich has gotten substantially bigger since all the rainstorms that we've gotten. Um, number two, just so that everybody knows, because I have known the, pardon my expression, the big picture about it. The Fairgrounds Road, they blocked that off the other day, the state did, because somebody went in there and decided they wanted to dump their garbage there.
Yeah, we, I spoke to them.
So I was coming home, might leave my house one day and I saw the guys there and I pulled up and I said, "Thank you guys very much for doing that." I said, "I've been after it to get dumped for quite a while." I said, "You guys want to put up the guide rails or are we just going to leave the thing there?" And the kids said, "They are going to put up guide rails and that will be fenced off." So there will be no more dumping garbage here anymore.
We've spoken to the district a couple of weeks ago.
So that's very good. They had to haul all the garbage away there. Somebody decided they wanted to just dump the garbage there some, one night and it looked like hell. Um, I talked to you, Jeff, a couple, about three weeks ago, about our personal vehicle was being parked in a, one of our town buildings.
What did you say?
Uh, personal vehicle was being parked in a town, one of our town buildings and I was wondering when that was going to be rectified because it still has not been.
Okay, I'll investigate further.
And it's been probably about three months now since that's been going on. If you have any questions?
Been three months since the personal vehicle has been, is it being stored or is it during work hours?
Oh, it's being stored in our, our public building.
What public building?
Police department.
Are you aware of this, Jeff?
Um, Lynn mentioned it a couple of weeks ago and I'm looking into it.
Three quarters of the things I bring to you guys' attention is for people that are at the cafe in the morning and when I'm walking around town pitching, complaining about because they don't want to come to you guys because they're afraid of you. Well, I'm not afraid of you. I'm not afraid of anything that happens. But those are the only three questions I had, but thank you.
All right.
Thanks.
Is there anybody else that is interested in approaching the, uh, uh, public participation? Is there anybody online?
I can speak on that, about the personal vehicle.
Okay, we've got to answer the personal vehicle.
This is the chief. Um, yes, uh, when I've had my cars from Philadelphia bring here during the summer and I would park it inside the police department. And on the weekends, when I'm doing personal business, I would park the cruiser in there and take the personal vehicle out. Um, no one has expressed to me that that was a problem. If that is a problem now, then I can park the personal vehicle in a public parking space. Or in my house. for my house. But no one has expressed anything in a year and a half. So I think it's really a petty complaint. And if that's an issue or whatever, then the town manager should have brought it to my attention. Uh, Mr. Donie, you know where you can reach me and you could have brought it to my attention.
Okay, thank you, chief. We got that resolved. Now we know where the vertical vehicle is located. All right, uh, is there anything else? Any other, anybody else online interested in addressing the board? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Accept.
I am sorry, I just asked for public participation. Elroy, what do you got?
I just want to say I thank the board for their due diligence on how they made it, the tax base, wherever it is.
Thank you.
It's all their stuff.
That's nice. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Without objection, the board is adjourned. Okay, so we have, um, business to discuss about that when we're in open session. Because we're done with the meeting.
I'm sorry. All right, I wasn't- What's now?
Would you like some cookies?
I'm all set, actually.
Let's consolidate some cookies.
You're out of time, we'll see you Friday.
Bye, and enjoy.
And you may expect an email of a summary of what we're going to do. Giving you a little backup. I just had to, uh, had to clear my head and make sure that I'm good. I'm not leaving anything out. And of course, by sitting on it for a day, Roy might not know.
I'll resent it.
Thanks.
Have a good night. Charlie, would you give me that package of cookies over there? Elroy, it don't go away.
We have solid evidence.
Put a solid in.